Good evening. If you desire to address City Council tonight during our meeting, please complete a request to speak for them. They're available at the entrance, presented to the city clerk, and speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time. At this time, I will call to order and convene the City Council meeting, and the City Council is the successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Agency for the City of Grand Terrace. This is our regular meeting for February 24, 2018. Tonight, our invocation will be given by Dr. Mustafa Kuko of the Islamic Center of Riverside, and our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Henderson. Please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Every individual on the streets of America, our Lord, pray to you at a time when mentally drained people, crazy and unstable, are moving on the streets of America, brandishing their guns, killing our children and our people. Our Lord, we pray to you to make our schools, our places of worship, our places of work, our theaters, our malls, our clubs, and our streets here in the city of Grand Terrace and elsewhere to make them safe, secure, and peaceful, and to make this beautiful city of Grand Terrace a pasture of peace, security, tranquility, and protect its people from every sort of evil and from every evil doer. Our Lord, we thank you for making this meeting here tonight materialize, and we pray for you for it is success, and we ask you to shower your blessing on everyone who's here tonight and those who couldn't make it tonight. We pray also for you to grant the mayor and the members of the City Council the energy, the support, the strength, the perseverance to carry on their duties and serve this community with the highest level of excellence. Amen, amen, amen.
Thank you, Dr. Kuko. Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Hussey?
Present.
Councilmember Wilson?
I am here.
Mayor Protem Robles?
Present.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Present.
May you have a quorum?
Thank you. We have no special presentations tonight. Our consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial, and they will be acted upon by the City Council at one time without any discussion. Any council member, staff member, or member of the public may remove an item from the consent calendar for discussion, and as you will see on the dais, we have two of the sets of minutes that are amended. Are there any items that you wish to remove? All right. I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar, then.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Henderson, second by Councilmember Hussey. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Henderson, Hussey, and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
Thank you. Open public comment. This is a time for any member of the public to comment on items not on the agenda for tonight. I don't see anybody in the audience who is ready to speak at this time, so I will close public comment and bring it back to City Council for their reports on meetings that they attended on behalf of the city. We'll start with Councilmember Ken Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My report tonight is brief. This weekend, on Saturday, I spent almost six hours with my colleagues here on the Council, reaffirming our Vision 2030 vision, working through various issues and challenges facing the city, and I was pleased with the overall effort of the group, and I want to commend staff and the consultant for the good work done on behalf of the community, and I'm excited about the prospects going forward, and I thank my colleagues for their participation in the process. That concludes my remarks. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. Councilmember Bill Hussey?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple things. First of all, I'd like to thank the deputy who did an outstanding job apprehending a fugitive by the high school, and I'm sure everybody read about the person had a shotgun with shells or ammunition plus a large thing of drugs, and what scares me, there's two things. You know, they're so close to the high school at Gage Park, and the recent shootings we just had here in the United States of Florida, I mean, and there's kids that walk by there every day, but my hat's off to the deputy, and, you know, he did this solo. You know, he went out there and risked his life to make sure our community's safe, so my hat's off to you guys for that, and, you know, I hope to God that the city here that one day that we won't have them going solo, and they always have backup. I know they have backup, but it could have got worse, the situation, but, you know, I know you guys are trained to handle that, but still, it's better to have a partner, somebody to get your back. But thank him for taking care of that, because it could have been an ugly situation with the school district right there, the school, the high school right there, and by the grace of God, it wasn't. And I attended a league meeting, and one of the emphasis was the crime that is stats is going higher here, Inland Empire, and we have to be proactive. The league is, you know, fighting Sacramento for these ABs that are going, and it seems like, you know, it's a never-ending revolving door, and you guys are doing your job, and then it seemed like they're getting released. So as voters, we've got to make sure we do the right thing and be the voice, too, to make sure this is our state and our living area, and this is where we want to make sure our families are raised in a safe environment. And also, one other thing on the league, they sent a thing to Mr. Duffy, we have a letter here, but there's also on the gas tax, and it's a proposition that the league's going to be backing up. I don't want to get too involved in it, because I'm sure it might be an agenda item, because the league wants everybody, I mean, I'm the representative for it, but I want, you know, this council's a board, it's not just one person, we're a body, and I want to make sure we're all unanimous on backing it up for our city. But Proposition 69, the league's backing up, is going forward for, if the gas tax is still there, that the state government can't waste the money on other things, they can't pull the money from there, that the money's just going for road repairs only in our infrastructure. So I'm sure that'll be bringing back up, but once again, I would like to thank the deputy who made outstanding arrests and all the work they do, and our first responders that take care of our city, and thank our city staff, and thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey. Councilmember Doug Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. Just wanted to say I echo the council members' comments about our workshop. I thought it was a valuable opportunity to talk about our vision and to add and subtract as necessary and required. Recently, I've been involved in an educational opportunity that talks about bullying, and it's shocking how many kids are affected by bullying per year, and I have to think that somewhere along the line, the psychological aspects of those things, those actions that take place, have to affect nearly every family. You know, one out of four kids has been bullied in school at a point. It takes a lot of forums, and of course, cyberbullying is now the trend, and it doesn't make it better, it just makes it another piece, another bullet to put in the gun. So I think it's a good idea for the families of Grand Terrace to have those frank discussions with their kids and find out if there's anything that they've been affected by that they're not talking about, because most kids don't like to talk about it, but if you see their grades starting to go down, if you see a general incline toward, or decline towards depression and so on, there's something wrong. So I'd just like to suggest that we protect ourselves, and as Councilman Hussey talked about, being proactive, you know, is a pound of cure, so anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Mayor Protem Sylvia Robles?
Yes, on February 15th, I attended the Subcommittee for Omnitrans Administration and Finance, and there we discussed the budget goals and targets to start working on for this year, and also, on my task as being a board member, I completed reading all their audits and comprehensive finance report. They look in pretty good shape, and I completed the work performance evaluation for the CEO. And last week, I celebrated 44 years of marriage. I was a child bride.
Congratulations on your anniversary, Mayor Protem. I will move to my report. It was all about SBCTA, so February 14th, I got to spend the day with them. So we received the January 2018 procurement report. We also received and filed budget-to-actual reports for the second quarter, recommended approval of the reclassification of a receptionist position to a records technician. What they found is that they really needed to spend a whole lot more time determining which records that they needed to archive and which ones they needed to get rid of, and so with the receptionist that they had, they've actually reclassified that and changed her position and have found a number of other tasks for her to do. We recommend authorization of staff to release requests for construction management services for structural repairs to the San Bernardino-Santa Fe Depot. It's nice to have historic buildings, but when it comes to having to make sure that they are safe to use, there's quite a bit that needs to be done maintenance-wise. Received information on development mitigation annual report for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2017. We recommended an authorized negotiation of a restricted grant agreement between the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority and Caltrans, and this will allow SBCTA to receive funding for the development of a comprehensive pedestrian sidewalk connectivity plan, so they will also release the RFP for the development of the plan. We recommended approval of a contract with the California Energy Commission to receive an amount for development of San Bernardino County Subregional Greenhouse Gas Reduction Plan update, and then, of course, we received the February 2018 state and federal legislative updates as well as Public Affairs Activity Report for 2017. The next day, I was at the Metro Valley Study Session, and we received and filed change order for ongoing construction projects, the general overview of the proposed budget for fiscal year 2018-19, because it's budget season. We received the major project status report for the period through December 17th, and we recommended final approval for the amended and restated agreement with AECom Technical Services, and this amends the scope of work for the environmental revalidation, design, build, preliminary engineering, and right-of-way services, increasing the contract amount for the Mount Vernon Avenue viaduct over the BNSF railway. We also recommended approval of contracts for on-call right-of-way services for three organizations, Bender Rosenthal, Epic Land Solutions, and Pacific and Cutler Incorporated. We recommended for final approval amounts for the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority Fiscal Year 1819 budget for the Valley Major Street arterial subprogram and the Valley Major Street Project Advancement Program Adjustment, and we recommended for final approval an allocation of Measure I Valley Freeway interchange funds for a portion of a project study report, and this is an interchange phasing program with the City of Ucaipa to fund a public share of the phased portion. And so that was it. Saturday, I spent six hours with my colleagues. I didn't realize it was six hours. We must have had a good time. Now, I appreciated the day that the staff prepared for us and the interaction with my staff, and that will end my report for right now. We will move on to item number six, under new business, which is the Treasurer's Report as of December 31st, 2017. May we have staff report?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council. My name is Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager. Before you is the Treasurer's Report for the period ending December 31st, 2017. The staff report supports goal number one, ensuring our fiscal viability through the continuous monitoring of expenditure budgets, allocations, and operational costs. The purpose of the Treasurer's Report is to provide the governing body with the following information: current cash position of the city and successor agency, identify where all the cash is held, show the city's financial position of having sufficient cash resources to make economic commitments for the next six months. So our first report just provides total numbers of cash, both the city and the successor agency totaling $25 million, and as noted, for the successor agency, the bulk of that are the 2011 bond proceeds. So our first comparison is a change in treasury position from fiscal year-to-date versus the previous quarter. As I mentioned earlier, the total cash and investments that we have under December 31st, 2017 is $25 million. The funds with fiscal agent is a requirement by our bond issue, so normally, when we talk about city and agency cash, we don't normally include that, but when we do provide a report, it is included. So the difference between September 30th, 2017, and December was an increase of roughly And the increases were mainly due to, we received our ROPS allocation of a little over $900,000, and we received our huge property tax allocation prior to December. The property tax allocation comes between December and January, so sometimes you will see the significant increase and other times you won't. Likewise, when we look at one year fiscal year-to-date versus last year, again, we see a $1.9 million increase, and the bulk of these, again, were for revenues received, the ROPS being one, property tax, as I mentioned earlier, and the grant reimbursement for the fitness park of roughly $300,000. In addition to providing actual cash on hand versus quarter and last year date, before I get to that, I'd like to remind City Council that, again, these reports are only cash balance at a certain point in time. It does not necessarily mean we have increased revenues, it just reflects the difference between cash from one time to another. Now, our final table shows the city's financial condition. So we do this by looking at the total, the city's total pooled cash, which is $6.2 million. We look at our 1718 approved budget, less the successor agency, because they have their own cash, and we divide that in two to get the operating costs for six months, and that is $4.9 million. So the current cash that we have on hand shows that the city is able to meet its expenditure requirements for the next six months. This concludes my report. I will be happy to answer any questions City Council may have.
Thank you. Assistant Manager Fortune, does council have any questions of staff at this time? All right, see, no. I will open it up for public comment. Is there anybody who wishes to speak at this time? See, no takers. We'll close public comment and bring it back to council for consideration of motion. And this is a receive and file, so if there are no objections, we will receive and file. And we will move on to item seven, which is an update on the successor agency's last and final recognized obligation payment schedule, or ROPS, submitted to the Department of Finance. Assistant City Manager Fortune is up again.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and board members of the successor agency. My name is Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager. The staff report before you tonight provides an update on the successor agency's last and final recognized obligation payment schedule, otherwise known as ROPS, since it's submitted to the Department of Finance on November 3rd, 2017. The staff report supports city goal number one, ensuring our fiscal viability through the continuous monitoring of revenue receipts and expenditure disbursements, and by requesting sufficient redevelopment property tax funds to pay for agency obligations. So to provide a little background, in February 2012, the Redevelopment Dissolution Act became effective. Under this act, the former redevelopment agency was replaced by the Grand Terrace Successor Agency, and they were tasked with winding down all Grand Terrace redevelopment activities and obligations. In addition to that, the Redevelopment Dissolution Act suspended the agency's authority to spend its 2011 tax allocation bonds that they issued on June 28th, 2011. So when we talk about our 2011 bond proceeds, in September 2015, Senate Bill 107 was enacted to remove bond spending restrictions under certain conditions and by a certain formula. If a successor agency received a finding of completion, the agency may spend 5% of its bonds. A finding of completion is a determination from the Department of Finance saying that the agency has actually satisfied all its obligations. So we received our finding of completion in May 2003.
2013.
2013. So then, the agency requested the use of 5% of its bond proceeds and was authorized to transfer $208,900 to the city for use as required by the bond covenant. Now, SB 107 also stated that upon the agency's approval of its last and final ROPS, it may request an additional amount of bond proceeds. For Grand Terrace Successor Agency, that equated to 15%, or $1.9 million. So on November 3rd, we submitted our last and final ROPS, and with that, we also requested the authority to use $1.9 million of the bond proceeds. When we submitted both requests in relation to the use of the bond proceeds, the Department of Finance was obligated to answer the successor agency and the Oversight Board within 45 days of that Oversight Board approval, and that was approved on the 1st, November 1st, Unfortunately, we were not able to come into agreement in relation to our last and final ROPS. So by December 15th, the Department of Finance sent us a letter stating that since we had not received an approved last and final ROPS, requesting the use of the 2011 bond proceeds was premature at this time, meaning should we decide to continue with our last and final ROPS, we would have to resubmit a new bond expenditure agreement for that additional So now, to provide you an update with the last and final ROPS. As mentioned earlier, the requirements of a last and final ROPS are an issue of a finding of completion, which we received in May 2013. The remaining debt is limited to costs, administrative costs, debt service, loan agreements, and all these obligations would have had been previously listed on our ROPS and approved by the DOF. And our last final requirement was that the agency is not a party to any outstanding litigation. So we met all those requirements, as stated, and we submitted our last and final ROPS on November 3rd. So after several conference calls with the Department of Finance, they proposed several adjustments to the agency's last and final ROPS: the use of bond proceeds to pay for the annual debt service of the 2011 bonds, the reduction in projected trustee fees, reduction in property maintenance fees, and a reduction in the annual administrative allowance. Based on everything that we had discussed with them, agency staff agreed to the reductions in the last, these three: trustee fees, maintenance fees, and administrative allowance. What the city manager felt was that he was not authorized to agree to the use of bond proceeds to pay for annual debt service of the bonds. So at this time, we are presenting with you several alternatives in relation to the city's last and final ROPS. Our first alternative would be to continue with an annual ROPS submittal. So should the agency choose not to submit a last and final ROPS, do nothing, and to continue to submit an annual ROPS to the Department of Finance each year, the effect would be a $210,000 increase in salary and benefits to the general fund. The current administrative allowance that the city is charging the successor agency is $250,000. However, when we were discussing with the Department of Finance, they strongly pointed out that the number of transactions we have left to process during the year are less than 10. They could not, we could not justify a $250,000 admin allowance, so what we did was bring it down to $40,000 for our continued annual ROPS. Therefore, the difference would have to be absorbed by the general fund. Our second alternative would be to agree to the DOF's adjustment of using bond proceeds to pay for annual debt service. The general fund would see a slight increase in revenue of approximately $18,000 for the first few years, increasing to over $300,000, as shown in Table 2. What is good about this particular alternative, it will provide the city access to that additional 15% of bond proceeds. Net revenue to the general fund is minimal, but as I stated, but then we would be able to use $1.9 million in accordance with the redevelopment plan. to use 1.9 million in accordance with the redevelopment plan. Unfortunately, should redevelopment law change and new legislation is enacted to allow the use of bond proceeds, we would not have that option. Our final alternative is to agree to the Department of Finance's proposed adjustments to the agency's last and final ROPS, after which we can consider refunding or defeating the 2011 bonds. That is after we've received our last and final. So again, if we receive our last and final, we will have access to 15% of that, after which we can request to refund the bonds. If we choose to do so, based on the table in the staff report, we would see an annual net general fund increase of a little over $200,000 annually. And again, the downside to that is should legislation again change, we will no longer have that 16, 17 million dollars to use for future infrastructure, should we choose to At this time, agency staff recommends that the agency continue to submit the annual ROPS to the DOF, because we firmly believe, and the city manager can add to this, that legislation may change in the near future. I also wanted to add as a note that should the successor agency choose to resubmit a last and final ROPS after June 2018, just a reminder that the county Oversight Board takes effect July 1st. From what we've seen, there's not much information on how they will act, what they will review, what they will approve. So just, we're trying to be cautious if this is something that the agency would like to consider. That concludes my report. The city manager and I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for that report. I have a first question. On your third alternative, you're saying that if we agree with the DOF's adjustment and use bond proceeds to pay for debt and consider refunding the bonds, that it would provide a general fund with a net increase in revenue of approximately 240,000. Is this over the 210,000? So it would, it would help to absorb the 210,000, and then there would be an additional 240,000?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Council have any questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Henderson.
Just want to make sure I understand, I think I understand the options. If we continue with the last best and final ROPS, will that, will we retain the option to use the 2011 tax allocation bond proceeds if redevelopment law changes in our favor?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Henderson, I couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry. If we, if we continue to submit the last best and final ROPS, I think is the proper characterization, I'm not sure, but in any of, and if we continue to do that, will we maintain the option of expending the 2011 tax allocation bond proceeds if there is new redevelopment law and it is in our favor? Or are we limited to just the 1.9 million dollars?
When we asked that of the Department of Finance, the answer we would, we got, we received was it would have to be written in the new legislation. So at this point, when you do a last and final, they gave us the impression that you would be committed to that, so we may not have access to those bond proceeds anymore.
Okay, so our attorney requested from DOF staff, the statutory authority for requiring the city to use the bond proceeds for debt service. And I understand we still haven't received a response in that area, and I was just wondering if we have more information that could inform the council about that particular aspect.
No, sir. I, the conference call was today. I will get briefed with Barrett. I unfortunately missed that this morning. So, but as soon as we get an update from our legal counsel, I will make sure the city manager provides information to the successor agency.
Okay. To be clear, the staff recommendation is, is to continue with the ROPS submittal and make available the 1.9 million dollars?
No, sir. If we continue with an annual ROPS submittal, we don't get to use any of the bond proceeds today. And what we will get is an increase in our general fund expense of roughly 210,000. The only way to access that 1.9 million is to submit a last and final ROPS.
Yes, and Mayor, if I might just.
Mr. City Manager.
For the record, gee, I'm the City Manager. So the proposal that staff is recommending is that we continue on with the annual ROPS, and that would allow us to, at potentially some point in time, to be able to access the complete bond proceeds. So status quo would basically say this, we don't have access to the 15% of the 1.9 million dollars, but we do preserve the right, if RDA changes, that we can use our full 17 million dollars in bond proceeds. And I sent you, I placed a copy of an email from the League, and they believe that there will be some sort of movement on redevelopment in the potential in the future. And one of the things about doing nothing right now is you can, you can actually file your last and final ROPS whenever you want. So for example, if it's six months from now, the council decides we'd much rather try to access the 1.9 million, and we take our chances and move forward with paying the debt service with the, with the bond proceeds, you can do that at any point in time. There's no rush to do that. Our concern is that because there is going to be a change in the, in the governorship, that the, the new governor might do something that would bring back redevelopment or allow us to use the full, full 17 million dollars in bond proceeds. So sort of a wait and see, let's wait and see what happens before we commit our bonds to pay the debt service.
Any other questions at this time?
I just have a comment, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Henderson.
It might be in our best interest to initiate conversations with Larry Walker from the county, since I assume that he would be a member of the county Oversight Board or provided some information in the staff capacity. But, but I think it's important for county officials to know what our game plan is, what we're trying to accomplish, and what that, we're trying to, to maintain access to and control of the 2011 tax allocation bond proceeds. And I think the earlier we know where the county, or at least a principal in the county Oversight Board might, might be on that, it would inure to our benefit long term, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mayor Protem, did you have a question?
I think Doug wanted to.
Okay, Councilmember Wilson, did you have a question?
I'm still absent of the knowledge of, because I don't have a copy of the actual original act, which I probably should have looked at first, it's my fault. The instigation of this, because it was a two-part wave that hit us, where the RDA was to be demolished because a year and a half or two years before the governor launched this little play, he had his auditors run out and check to see if he could find abuses to justify the action. And of course, they found lots of abuses, which, you know, was kind of a self-fulfilling prophecy, and that was the intention, at least to justify dismantling the entire system. I've never really understood, and I guess it's integral to me to understand how they, the act crippled us in bonds that we initiated from using that money, how the state has had the, had the authority granted to itself to hold any distribution of those bond proceeds. I don't understand. And for me, that, that's the first step. The second step, though, is what I'd like to know what your recommendation is here, because it sounds like to me, number one's bad, and number two and number three, both are dependent upon whether or not the new governor that replaces the character that's in there now, might initiate some sort of legislation that would prohibit our opportunity to use the bond, the bonds that we've already instigated and been sitting on for 10 years.
So let's start off with your, your first question regarding how this works where, so basically, there's seven, there were 750 million dollars in bond proceeds that were, the bonds that were floated out there. And so the governor actually started this process of trying to eliminate redevelopment in 2011. And so there were some jurisdictions that had bonds, some that were, were trying to float those bonds before redevelopment ended. And so the whole premise of the bonds is basically, you take the tax increment to pay off, to pay off the bonds, the bonds are used as that security. So when the governor ended redevelopment, he basically, his goal was to not to have those bonds out there for the RPTTF to pay down the bond debt, but to actually freeze those bonds and then make you defees those bonds, so there'd be more money. And what this is really all about, it's about the redevelopment tax increment that we're currently, we're getting for a number of years, really belonged to other agencies like the school districts. And so when the, when the state had a financial problem, because they had to backfill that money to the school districts, by ending redevelopment, they were now able to put that money, put that money back. And so that was the governor's overall goal. So you see, the state right now has a very healthy budget. It's because most of that money that they got, what used to come to redevelopment, now is being pushed back inside. And so what the governor said was, you can't use any of those redevelopment bonds. And actually, because our bonds were floated so late toward the end of redevelopment ending, we're only allowed to use 20%. There are other jurisdictions that had bonds that were floated in 2009, 2008, they were able to use almost 40% of those, of those bond proceeds. And I know this very well, because I fought this battle with the governor for five years. One was on, at related taxes when I was at another agency, and then this was when I came on board, the mayor and I actually met with the Assembly Speaker at the time to try to get, to try to free up our, these bond proceeds. And so that's, that's for the first question. Now, the second one is, you referenced the options one, two, and three. Staff's recommendation is, is basically, one, do, do nothing, just kind of hold where we are and see how things go. But if the council wants to access the 1.9 million dollars, then two and three would be your preference. However, you're taking 19 million dollars, or 17 million dollars, and you're basically almost saying you're not going to be able to have access to that for a short-term gain of 1.9 million. I did want to also remind the council that if you take an action of what staff's recommending, at any point in time, you can, you can file your last and final ROPS. The one thing that Ms. Fortune and I were talking about, and what's important, is that after July, we will have to go to the Oversight Board. Now, the Oversight Board doesn't make the final decision. We go to Oversight Board and we submit our information to the Department of Finance. Now, based upon what we submitted to the Department of Finance, they were going to approve our, our last and final ROPS. We were just not willing, and I didn't have the authority to tell the, without coming back to the council to say, okay, we're going to switch this, and now we're going to take revenue, the 19, 17 million dollars, and start paying debt service. That's not the action that the council took in November. So that's why we said, pause, and we'll come back and provide the council with the options.
One additional question. What do we do with the 210,000 dollar increase in cost?
Okay. And so what happens is, we now have to look at our, our budget. The good thing for us is that historically, we spend about 95% of our, of our budget. So you've got a little play in there. However, with the loss of, you know, some of our, our sales tax generators and this particular issue, it's going to require us to really sort of hunker down and come up with a way to, to address this issue.
I'm going to give, Mayor Protem?
I know, I, I looked at this and, you know, really find it muddled. And so I thought I'd come here and see what my peers and what the, you know, oral presentations were, and listening to this, I don't understand what we're really gaining on this, because I'm looking at, at the city attorney, and they're saying there's nothing in the statute that says they have the authority to impose this on us. But at the same time, we're talking about RDA tax increment. Okay, so that would, we're also part of that tax rate area. So if we defees this, everybody becomes whole again with that money that was taken away. So, and, and we get to spend 1.9 million dollars. So I don't understand how we gain, because it's kind of a charade. The council at that time floated some bonds 11th hour, knowing that this RDA landscape was changing. And that's kind of was, when I, I wasn't on the council, but I, you know, it was kind of a bad, bad faith move. Now we're saying we want to hang on to this and see what, what happens. Well, the, the thing that, that was good about was because of renegade RDA policies, and I'm saying renegade, they weren't good policies, were going around and declaring anything blighted, and that what, what was happening was, is that schools were losing revenues, and the state was backfilling, and the house of cards was, was falling. So I think it might be best to strongly move deliberately, but to strongly, you know, think about that, if we defees the bond, why are we carrying debt that has interests and blah, 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 and now we've got to cover administrative costs? Let's just do it clean slate, because we know we're going to have 99.9% a Democratic governor. So, and if any more of them don't end up having to resign their seats, you know, we, we more than likely return to having a Democratic legislature. So there'll be some kind of reformed redevelopment agency, so I don't see the benefit of hanging on to one that was under the old model. And I would think as a legislator would wonder why we're hanging on to something under an old model.
The, the only benefit that we, that we're saying is that right now you have bonds, you actually, sorry, you actually have 17 million dollars in cash in your possession. And if a, there's a change in the governorship and they say you can now use those bonds, and remember, use those bonds for their original purpose. And that's always been a contention with even the governor getting involved in this. From the financial side is that, well, those bonds were floated for a particular purpose, they have a value, we should be able to use those bonds. So all that we're saying is, if you take an action that's going to commit those bonds to debt service, you no longer have access. And then to try and come back and do a bond indentment for 17 million dollars is quite a bit of a challenge. That's, that's the only thing we wanted to lay out, is that, that you, right now you have in your possession 17 million dollars. have in your possession $17 million, with a very clear edict in terms of what you can do with that money. You just can't use it yet. And so if you, if something changes, then you should be able to have, use that money for its original purpose.
But that's like me, I got a tax return that belonged to somebody else, and it's my, in my checking account by accident, and I can't use it.
Yeah, you shouldn't.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of the same thing. I mean, we, you know, we, so if we go and we float bonds under a new RDA, we're affecting our own tax increment. So I think what you're saying is, there's not going to be that kind of ability to do $17 million using our own tax increment.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what that looks like. And I, and that's why we say this, that at any point in time, if the council decides to do nothing today, at any point in time, we can revisit this issue, and you can say, file the last and final ROPS, defees the bonds, or use the bond, use the money for debt service. There's no rush to do this.
Councilmember Henderson.
I'm generally supportive of the staff recommendation for a couple of reasons. Just by way of background and context, it's true that these bonds were issued late in the process. But having gone through the process with a number of redevelopment agencies, it's important for the council and the community to understand that no one thought the governor would be successful in dissolving redevelopment agencies. All of the legal councils, from redevelopment agency councils to the California Redevelopment Association Council, developed briefs explaining the flaws in the, in the, in the state's approach. Unfortunately, they were all wrong. In any event, the city of Grand Terrace is, all 3.6 square miles is in a redevelopment project area. That's to our benefit. And, and it makes, I think, not having reviewed the documentation in several years, but it makes the potential use of those funds significantly more flexible, because there isn't an area in our community that we cannot spend those funds for, for an approved redevelopment purpose, number one. Number two, as we discussed on Saturday, we have great plans for the future from an economic development perspective, and from a public infrastructure perspective. And no matter what you read in terms of effective economic development, whether it's incentives or streamline, permit streamlining, the most effective economic development tool is almost always the installation of public infrastructure. So we have some significant infrastructure goals. We have some goals with respect to the west side of the community. And it would be nice to have the use of those funds for that purpose. And I'll conclude by saying, I recognize there might be some near-term pain, but I think the status quo and what our goal is and what our vision is, is worth waiting. We've waited this long, waiting to see what might happen. It just seems logical to me, not that it matters at the state level, that if a new redevelopment program is instituted, and as Mr. Duffy has indicated, it might be difficult to, to structure a $17 million bond issue. It just seems to me that if you already have a bond issue, and, and the process has been gone through by all of the entities, including the local redevelopment agency, it's easier to free up those monies as part of a new program without impacting anyone in the future other than what was called for in the original bonded indenture statement. So I think $200,000 is significant, and, and it is some pain. It's not insubstantial, and I don't want to characterize it as such, but I, I think it's worth the wait for a few more months to see where we go from here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. And I, no city manager would like to speak, but I, I do want to say this as being part of the council that did sell these bonds, that it was not done in bad faith. It was done as an opportunity that we saw going away, for us to use the one tool that we had in our toolbox at the time, to do the infrastructure projects that had not been done in this city. And that had to do with storm drains, and it had to do with shoring up the hillside down Mount Vernon, and a number of other projects that we saw that we could get done. And so I don't believe that I agree that this is money that didn't, that's in our account that belongs to somebody else. We followed the guidelines that were available at the time. However, we did not do it in a timely manner, and we did not meet the cutoff date. And so that is why it is held frozen at this time. City Manager Duffy, you wanted to make a comment?
Yes. Just a kind of a quick update in, in terms of, so the city attorney did send a letter to the DOF, questioning them about, you know, what was the authority to, they had authority. So our big issue, and when they had that conversation, we will ask the city attorney to, to be sure and kind of stress this. Our big issue is, so the last and final ROPS, you can, you can amend your last and final ROPS. So when we asked them, if redevelopment changes, can we amend our last and final ROPS? So we, we don't have to use our debts, our, our bond proceeds to do the debt service? They said, well, we'll have to see. And so we said, well, we can't, we can't really move forward with this. So one of the things that we can do is that when we, when the city attorney has the conversation with the DOF attorney, we can ask them about that question, about if the, if the council were to decide to move forward with, using the debt service. Because what happens is, when the finance director really looked into how they were going to be using the bond proceeds to pay the debt, the debt service, they're not using all of the bond proceeds. They're using a very small portion each annually. So you're not, they're not doing $5 million and so on and so on. So there's, so for example, if we do get the buy-in from the attorney, from the Department of Finance, that yes, you can amend your last and final ROPS. So you can say, we're no longer going to be paying, using our debt service, using the proceeds for debt service, we can make that, we can make that change. What that would do for us, that would allow us access to the $1.9 million by filing the last. So there's still some unanswered questions out there that we could, that we need to push through, through our attorney's conversation with the Department of Finance. And that's one of the reasons why we had the recommendation, that we, we just think that at this point in time, we should just file the annual ROP, the annual ROPS, and we can come back to the council if something changes.
Well, I think what you had to do-
Mayor Protem.
The council and people have to know is, okay, because I'm hearing that they didn't act in bad faith, but they also failed to meet the requirements.
There wasn't a deadline at the time.
Okay, well, so, so here's the thing, it's other people's money in that tax increment as the way that it's, it took on right now. We're taking money from schools and other agencies as far as their increment to deal with infrastructure issues that have to deal with Grand Terrace. So the argument can be made is we're using school money to do infrastructure things that is the obligation of this, of the property taxes that we get. Now, also if you defees that, how much, I could see in the report that you bring back, is if, in the tax rate area, if we get 19. something, what would that amount be? And is it, you know, one time? Is it, I guess it's a one-time payment? So there's some other lenses. And so I'm, I'm fine with going and waiting, because they're also behaving willy-nilly when you say in September 2015, the dissolution act was amended. So, but, you know, I think you need to tell us some benchmarks. You know, and I don't, I would think that we're not going to have anything, right? I mean, you know, I guess by, whenever a deadline is for all the legislative actions, after an election, maybe some, some ideas. Whenever the new governor comes, he's going to have a January state of the, of the state. But what I don't, and also talking to the, the new oversight people, and getting a temperature for how we're proceeding in this.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I might?
Councilmember Henderson, and then Councilmember Wilson.
The, the, having gone, lived through this process, those agencies, including Gran Terrace, that issued bonds, issued bonds in good faith. Only after the state realized that agencies were proceeding with, with public financings, was the date established that would make those bonds legal or not. And the date was, was deliberately pushed backwards. Instead of anything effective February 27th, today's date, forward, the state's action was, anything that was issued prior to January 1st of 2018 is going to be hereby disallowed. So many agencies, including Grand Terrace, got caught up in that. But that was just because of the nefariousness of the state, and as Mr. Duffy has already indicated, the desire, and Mr. Wilson as well, the desire of the state and the governor to, to recapture redevelopment revenue and, and backfill the state education fund. And, and I don't want to get off into the weeds, but redevelopment agencies were already contributing over and above their annual tax allocation proceeds to the state education augmentation fund. We were writing checks every year that the state imposed upon agencies to backfill what the state's general fund couldn't do with respect to education.
Well, that's a mischaracterization.
Could be, but in any event.
Let's not, let's not have the discussion about redevelopment agency that's already dead. And I understand Mayor Protem's position on redevelopment agencies, I do. And I do understand that, that we're trying to set the record straight. However, where we are right now is we need to make a determination of how we want to move forward. Councilmember Wilson, did you have a question you wanted to ask?
Thank you, Mayor. Two things that I see in relation to this that reinforce the recommendation, quasi-recommendation, is, number one, time is of the essence. So when these things, if these things, there's some kind of legislative act actually allows us to amend our situation and take a benefit from it, we have to be ready. And initiating a new bond process, as we know, government runs at absolute glacial speeds, especially state government. And so in that case, I think it probably is best to keep the device or the mechanism that we have. Also, didn't we prepay a whole bunch of initiation money in this bond that we would not, if we were going to have to initiate a new action with new bonds, then we'd pay it again? And it was no small amount of money. So I'm, I'm thinking it's best to do nothing and hang on for the ride.
Councilmember Hussey, any comments or questions at this time?
I agree with Mr. Councilmember Wilson. You know, it's, when you come on the council, it's like, it opens up a lot of doors, and you see all this red tape and everything else, and you go on the League of Cities, and you hear about all this other, you know, state politics, and, you know, and I was told that our Governor Brown, when he was a mayor of Oakland, kind of abused the redevelopment bond, so that's why he passed all this stuff, because he knew where the money was going. You know, our city staff are paid by the taxpayers to make, to help us, the council, make decisions. And, you know, like the Mayor Protem said, you know, it's our money that we're paying for, we can't even spend it. It's almost like a trust fund that's sitting there, but we can't use it. I don't like debt, but I know we need to take care of some of our infrastructures here and stuff. So I'll just emphasize, I'll go with the staff recommendation, and we'll see what happens and move forward. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, any other questions at this time? All right, I'm going to open up public comments, although those that are in public, are out in the, the audience have not wanted to speak, but they might want to speak now. So is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? All right, seeing no takers, I'll bring it back to council for consideration and further deliberation.
Well, I'll approve the, the alternate one to continue with submittals, but I want some benchmarks added in there, and staff can choose those. But also, could you report back to, in the tax rate area, what the, what the defeasement would look like and how all the agencies would be affected? And also report back to us when you meet with the county oversight and the treasure tax collectors, city attorney, state legislative reps, and give us a temperature where we're, we're going on this as, as governing bodies.
Mayor Protem, may, may I ask that, that just come back in the form of, can we report back in June on this, on this report?
Sure. Okay, so I'll approve alternative one to continue with annual ROPS, submittals to Department of Finance, with a staff report due in June.
All right. So we have a motion by Mayor Protem, and thank you for adding those, those reporting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Henderson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Board members Henderson, Hussey, and Wilson voting yes, Vice Chair Robles voting yes, Chair McNaboe voting yes.
All right, thank you. We will move to item eight, which is a mid-year second quarter and year-end budget review for fiscal year 2017-18. Assistant City Manager Fortune?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council. Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager. The staff report before you tonight is for the mid-year second quarter and year-end budget review for fiscal year 2017-18. This staff report supports City Council Goal Number One, to ensure fiscal viability through the continuous monitoring of revenue receipts and expenditure disbursements against approved budget appropriations. The purpose of the review are twofold, to update the council on the December 17 mid-year report and to provide projections for the current year's year-end. So the table in front of City Council is for the December 17 revenues. As of December 31st, 2017, general fund operating revenues received were a little over $2 million, resulting in a positive variance of approximately $39,000. And this is mainly due to the increase in property tax collections for the period, due to the sale of property resulting in higher valuations. So for operating expenditures, general fund operating expenditures are $2.5 million, showing a positive result of $121,000 against expected savings. And this was a result of positions remaining vacant during the first several months of the year. At this time, for any variances that council may see, I will be explaining them when we talk about our year-end projections. So to summarize, much as if you look at the year-to-date actuals, where our actual revenues are close to $2.2 million and our expenses almost $2.5, we are still under budget. So basically, we're $160,000 to the good. So we wanted to provide council with a little information regarding our sales stocks, sales tax, and property tax. Okay, the current city's sales tax is 7.75%. And I wanted to show council the breakdown by state, county, and city. The state gets 6% of that 7.5%. The county gets 0.75. Now, of that 0.75, 0.5% is measure I funding, which we do get back, we do get a portion for our streets, for street improvements, and there's the city's 1%. So for example, if a resident buys an auto part, a part in AutoZone for $100, sales tax added would be 7.75. And so we would get a dollar from that, $7.75. So the city basically earns one cent for every sales tax dollar collected within the city. So now for property tax, based on the projection that was provided by our property tax consultant, city projected taxable value for the current year is $968 million. And we receive basically 0.29%. As you can see, we get 1.8 million, that goes directly to the general fund, and we roughly receive 1 million through the redevelopment property tax trust fund to give us total property tax estimated at 2.8 million annually for the general fund.
Sorry.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make sure I understand. So with almost $1 trillion in taxable value, what comes to the city of Grand Terrace from, from property tax proceeds is 2.8 million? Am I reading that correctly?
Yes.
Thank you. I just want, you know, all of us, I've talked to people who live in the community and they say, I pay my taxes. And then they tell you what the issues or concerns are. And, and, and that's all well and good, but I think it's important for everyone to appreciate the fact that $1 trillion in taxable value only generates $2.8 million.
Billion.
One billion. Almost one billion.
I mean, one billion. I'm sorry. Yes. 2.8 million to the city. And I think it's a, a, a point worthy of repeating as often as we get the opportunity. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. If you would continue.
So to put it in perspective, if we had a home valued at $350,000 and that same home paid their taxes, the city receives a thousand dollars, because that's 0.29%.
Right. And so put it in the context really is that, so the, the property owner pays the annual 1% assessment, but we don't get that whole 1%. And we get that 0.290%.
And that's, that's to Councilmember Henderson's point.
Absolutely.
Yes. Mayor Protem?
How do we go from 19% to 29%? Because the combined, how, when you're...
Well, so what happens is, so on the, on the, you want to go back to your slide where you showed how we get something, money going directly into a property tax? And then we also get the redevelopment property tax trust fund.
So we get to be in line again as a taxing entity for the RPTTF.
Yeah. So we really are at 19% still, property tax.
Overall.
Add the alarm. Yeah. So that's quite a big jump to leverage $17 million.
So you get the, the base tax, you get, you're automatically guaranteed the 1.186%, the 1.8 million dollars. And then the RPTTF fluctuates based upon what's available in, in that fund. So, yeah, you, you actually are getting the additional million, million dollars, you get the 2.8 million. And, you know, just to be, just to be clear, can we go back to that slide? That $1 million is the residual after the bond payment has been made. So the $17 million that we, that we have and the, and for the bond payments, that's already being, on the current structure, that's being paid for. And then that, that's the residual that's left for us, our share, to get the 2.8 million. So if the bonds are, are paid off, there would be more money going into that RPTTF. And that was the, that was the difference in the $400,000 minus the admin fee that Miss Fortune showed earlier.
The net $240,000.
Right.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Councilmember Henderson.
In this table here, Mr. Duffy or Miss Fortune, does this assume a certain number of homes that were purchased prior to Prop 13 and so many afterwards? Or is it a blending of it?
You, so, so this is really, over time, what you have right now is, there are still homes that are in the pre-Prop 2, Prop 2, Prop 13.
13.
Prop 13. And we're seeing, I believe, 10 years ago, we were seeing $45 million that were, that was, that was stuck in this pre-Prop 13 arena, that you were not getting that, the full assessment on. But as homes starts, starts, starts to sell, then you, you're seeing that number start to wind down. So this is the latest up-to-date number of that. I believe it's about $9 million in assessed value that's being assessed at the, at the Prop 13 level at, at this point in time. We can, we have a report from HDL and that's a really good report, we can provide that to the council.
That would be nice to see.
So to continue with our year-end revenues, what I, what our table shows, first column, is that City Council approved a little over 5 million. That's our adopted budget. The only difference in the last six-month period was the additional use of the bond proceeds. So our revised projected revenue would have been 5.3 million. So there are certain variances that came into play when we were calculating for our year-end revenue, as shown in the column. Our property tax is showing roughly an increase of $250,000, as shown in that table, and the change, that is due to the change in ownership of several properties resulting in increased property tax collections. Our sales tax is showing a $150,000 decrease. And this is again, is a result of one of our biggest sales tax revenue generators. That was one source, and they have now relocated to Riverside County. And we have charges for services that decreased by $16,000. So this just showed a decrease in rental inspection fees and building and safety plan revenue charges. And we had a decrease in fines and forfeit, fines and forfeitures of about $18,000. Another big decrease is in our use of money and property. When the city outsourced its childcare services program and facility to Family Services Association, we originally negotiated a lease of $120,000. Due to unforeseen circumstances, FSA came back and renegotiated that contract to reduce the lease to $42,000, which City Council approved several months later. So that is the $77,000 decrease. However, as shown at the bottom, the overall decrease to revenue is a little under $16,000. So our next table is our projected year-end expenditures. Again, we adopted a budget of $5 million. The two items that City Council approved in the last six months, one again was the use of bond proceeds in the amount of $239,000, and the other was an additional $8,500 to the senior center budget to help provide funds to fund the program coordinator at the senior center. So with a revised budget of 5.3 million, our projected year-end expenditures are roughly So if we look at the last column, our projected revenues of 5.3 million, less our projected expense of also 5.3 million, we will be within budget.
And, and so Mayor, Council, this is the chart that we've often provide to council during every budget session. That shows the historical trend that we had. And we, we use the verbiage of a healthy, sustainable, vulnerable, unsustainable, insolvent. And so an unsustainable budget or insolvent budget is one that where the, where the expenditures meet, the expenditures exceed the revenues that's generated. A vulnerable budget is a budget where the revenue does exceed the expenditures, but there's no real growth that, that's occurring. And, and you don't, and you don't have a recommended reserve that the Gatsby recommends for two-month rainy day fund. And then you have a sustainable budget where the, where the revenue does continue to exceed the expenditures, and you have that two-month rainy day fund. And a healthy budget is where the revenues exceed the expenditures, you have that, that two-month reserve, and you can, your budget continues to grow, where you keep putting more and more money in for a rainy, for a rainy day and actually moving your, your programs forward. And so this is the chart we're showing where the council, where the, where the city was in 2008, '09, and where we are as in currently and projected to be in 17, '18. So with that, we're available for any questions?
Questions, the staff. Councilmember Hussey.
No, like, not a question, it's a comment. What Councilmember Henderson said, you know, property taxes, same thing, you know, you're, you're walking through the city and stuff, and, you know, we're blessed to, to have a somewhat safe city, you know? Like I said earlier, I, I think the state hinders a lot in what the crime has gone up throughout the state because, you know, like I said, I worked in the prison, they're cleaning out the house, and we getting back in our neighborhoods. And, you know, people that, their idea is that they, they pay the taxes, and I know the state, we get taxed a lot, I mean, I just did my income tax and, you know, you get all happy, you're getting money back, but you see all the money you paid into it. And I understand, you know, taxes are a necessity to pay for services. But same as the property tax, because, you know, I write the check every six months for that. And people are in the mindset like, hey, I pay 4,000, 5,000, whatever, property taxes all going to the city. Well, we're not. We get breadcrumbs. You know, we get a little bit of, the bread comes from that big piece of loaf of bread, you know, I'm saying a whole slice of bread. The money goes out to the county and the state, and they do whatever. So I think we're doing what we can with the breadcrumbs, but I think we need bigger slices of the bread, you know, to maintain our services here. And I'm glad that, you know, Miss Fortune did an excellent job on this, you know, to bring, and your staff, to bring to light, you know, how much, what the property taxes go and stuff, because, you know, it's unfortunate, a lot of people have that misconception. And I did too before, you know, you think, hey, I pay this tax and it should go for all that, I'm doing this. But, you know, as a city, we're here to provide those services for our residents. And, you know, the, the property tax, you know, I think we're, God, look at all the, the dark ages because our home values have gone up, so we got a little bit more. But, you know, one thing about the state, it does cycles just like the drought. We always, we get out of the drought, we go back in the drought. Home prices go up, the price is down. So it's, you know, we still have to maintain for that rainy day. So, but, you know, thank you for the report, and this is my thing, and showing where taxes go. And, you know, I know on the council, we're pretty conservative, and we make the best little breadcrumbs we have, you know? So I just want to thank you, Miss Fortune, and your staff for preparing this. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Any questions, the staff? Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to know for ourselves and for the public, if we were to float bonds, what our bonding capacity is, because what I recall, working with the, with bond entities, was about three, excuse me, three times your secured roll was the measure. But it'd be, because the state doesn't get our property tax. What the state did was, was having to do with the tax increment that was divided up amongst local entities. So I think we need to know that distinction. But I think it'd be, you know, as we're transitioning to our former discussion, we should know what our own bonding capacity is. And thank you for your report.
Councilmember Wilson.
Thank, thank you, Assistant City Manager. Great job. This is what I was looking for about a month ago, and it came all in, just like it was supposed to in time. One distinction I'd like to ask the city manager, he talked about, about $9 million worth of our housing stock, probably stuck in the, in the Prop 13 situation. Is that about the number?
Yes.
The math I do is if we use an average value of $350,000 per house, we're talking about 25 houses. And it's a 40-year-old legislation. So when we start to attack that thought pattern of the Prop 13 circumstances, get a stranglehold on our revenues, I don't think it's accurate. I mean, we're talking about 25 houses in a 4,400 household community, and we're the littlest one, we're the littlest pebble in the biggest rock in the, in the United States. So it would seem to me that our system is working. And with the, the future sales that are going to be happening, with the values going up the way they are, I, I don't imagine that even accounts for remortgaging houses without selling the houses. So, but if it does, still, we're talking about 25 houses. We've got that value locked up. So what?
And so what's actually, so what's actually happening is, and that report that we have, we can give to you from HDL, and it'll give you a very accurate picture. But what we're seeing is, in that report, and I'm, I'm comfortable in saying this, is that the report shows that, that there are three communities in the San Bernardino, in the San Bernardino County that are 90% or above where the property values were in, in 2012. And it's Grand Terrace, that 90% of the value that it was in 2012, and I think Rancho and Redlands might be, might be the other two. So we are, in terms of property values, the, the home values in Grand Terrace are performing quite, quite well. And, but I think that is a great report, and we, we will certainly get that to the council as soon as possible.
Mayor Protem?
I'm sorry, you know, I had to go back in the time machine in my head to, on the educate, you know, because we've got to remember, we're a general law city, so we're, we're a creature of the state. We get the property tax. And the reason the governor was able to get rid of RDA was because the Educational Revenue Augmentation Fund was, we voters 40 years ago said, yeah, we want to freeze property taxes, and that an adjustment was done. So he was also governor back then, and he said, oh, cities and school districts won't be able to make it, and times were good, so let me get you a part of the state's revenue, and I'll take over funding schools, and I'm going to give you some of this money that you lost under Prop 13. So the reason in, in the state Supreme Court redevelopment agencies lost was because the, what the governor giveth, the governor can taketh away. So...
So be careful who you vote for for governor.
Well, it was on egg, on a very specific, narrow thing.
All right. Any other questions or comments at this time? And Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you.
And no, we're not going to debate the merits of redevelopment agencies.
No. This has nothing to do with redevelopment agencies.
Thank you.
I want to read just a, a brief list of cities and explain why, and their incorporation date. Apple Valley, November 28th, 1988. Big Bear Lake, November 28th, 1980. Chino Hills, December 1st, 1991. Grand Terrace, November 30th, 1978. Hesperia, July 1st, 1988. Highland, November 23rd, 1987. Rancho Cucamonga, November 30th, 1977. And there are more. I, I mentioned this only because, with one or two exceptions, Rancho Cucamonga and, and a couple of others, all of these communities incorporated later than Grand Terrace. And if you've been to those communities and you've looked at their commercial landscape and their homes and their industrial landscape, you have to ask yourself the question, why? Why there and not here in Grand Terrace? Why there? Well, the short answer, in my view, is prior councils were asleep at the switch. Well, the short answer, in my view, is prior councils were asleep at the switch. This council didn't create the problem, but this council must fix the problem, in my view. And we fixed that problem a number of different ways, but the most important of which is our 2030 vision. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Henderson. And we'll leave it there. If there's anybody in the public that would like to speak at this time, please say so. Seeing no takers, I will bring it back to council, and this is a receive and file, so unless there are any objections, we will move on to item nine, which is our FY 2018-19 Budget Development Guidelines and Budget Schedule. Again, Assistant City Manager, Fortune. One last time. And then we'll let you be.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Brotem, City Council. Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager. The staff report supports City Council Goal Number One, ensuring our fiscal viability, again, through continuous monitoring of revenue receipts and expenditure disbursements. Staff report for council's consideration tonight is approving the fiscal year 1819 Budget Development Guidelines and the proposed budget review schedule. So tonight, I just thought to highlight a few of the guidelines. So department budgets, departments should submit base budgets that reflect minimal change in staffing or service levels from the current fiscal year. Personal budgets will be developed by the finance department based on current staffing, compensation levels, and program allocations. The compensation will reflect the following constraints: adoption of 40-hour work week, approval of a one-time merit increase, if submitted for consideration by the city manager, and no cost of living adjustment. Any new personal requests or service requests must be supported by revenue sources or revenue When we submit the budget, any new personal requests will be listed as a separate line item, so the city council can consider each one. The city manager may propose a different work week schedule or merit increases, or a combination of both, should there be sufficient revenue sources. And any requests submitted by each department should state a negative impact should a request In addition to that, when we come back in April, we will be proposing a two-year budget for city council approval. So for our last item, we would like city council to consider approving the proposed budget review schedule for fiscal year 2018-19. That concludes my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions city council may have.
Miss Fortune, can you just leave it on that, that schedule? Put it back on the schedule, that's fine.
Okay, are there questions at this time? Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have a question, I have just a statement to make. And I want to compliment you personally, Mayor Brotem, Robles, Councilmember Hussey, Councilmember Wilson, Mr. Duffy, and Miss Fortune in particular, and I'll tell you why. Developing and managing the city budget is no walk in the park, if anyone's been paying attention. And the city's revenues haven't always necessarily matched the growth in cost. And so it is a very difficult proposition that other cities have not grappled with as effectively, and as well as the city of Grand Terrace over, over a period of time. I'm the, I'm the new person on this council, although I've had some experience as an employee of the city. And so this is kind of old news to me, but I think it's important, I just don't think that the importance of the council's work and the discipline it's exercised over a period of time can be overstated. And so it's my hope that the community sees that and appreciates that as we move forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for those words, Councilmember Henderson. Are there any questions of staff at this time? Is there anybody in the public who'd like to speak on this item? Seeing no takers, I'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
Mayor, motion for approval?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Wilson, second by Councilmember Henderson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Henderson, Hussey, and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Brotem Robles voting yes, and Mayor McNaboe voting yes.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to city manager communications. Mr. Duffy, do you have things to tell us?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick slides for you, that I just wanted to remind the public and the council that this Saturday, this Saturday, March 3, at 8:00 a.m., is the 11th Annual Walk on the Blue Mountain. And there will be a shuttle service also available, that you can park at various locations. If you go to the QR code there, or go to our website, you'll be able to find the various locations, including City Hall, or also at Terrace View Elementary School. And I believe that's, those are the two locations that'll take you up to the top of the Blue Mountain. One of the exciting things about this year is that if you go on the Blue Mountain hike, you can also find Pokemon. So they will be out there. And we also want to remind you that there's also tuition bites will be at the top of the mountain, selling burritos, and 100% of those profits will go towards the scholarships for Grand Terrace High School students. And so that's going to be an exciting day. Also, just a reminder, we said this out, noticed out a while back, maybe a week or so ago, about fraud alert, we were getting phone calls from residents who are indicating that they had received a call from contractors, and that they were certified to work on residential, private residential dwellings by the city of Grand Terrace. And we, we do not endorse or certify anybody to work on your property. And so if you get those calls, please report that and call this number down below. With that, Mayor and council, available for any questions?
All right, Councilmember Wilson, you have a question?
Might also add to that, we get a lot of, a lot of pretty cards made up, because a lot of people have computer ease, knowledge, and so on. But if you don't see a contractor's license on there, forget it. Because as has happened in the past, if you contract with somebody, and they don't have proper insurance, and so on, and they get hurt on your property, guess who pays the bill? So it's something to think about before you just hire Joe Blow off the street to do your trees.
You know, that's a very important point. And one of the other things that can drive that home is that, you know, contractors are supposed to have a city license. And so if anything will happen, if you get swindled by a contractor, if they, if they actually have a city license, we have that information that we can provide you, that we, all the contact information. So it's important to ask your contractors to show you their city business license. That will certainly help secure your ability to get the information. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Henderson, or Hussey?
Thanks, Mr. Duffy. I mean, that was one of the people that got a phone call from the, they said that they were contracted with the city of Grand Terrace to do contract work in your own private home. And I let him do his little spilt, and I told him where I was, and he hung up, and I called him back, he wouldn't answer. But yeah, you know, they're doing these phone calls too, so yeah, the city doesn't back anything, we want to make the, get the word out. The same thing, I remember about five years ago, they had the same thing with the painting the curves for the, your home address, they put on there that they were contracted with the city, and you can make a donation. But, you know, just, just remember, if you have any questions or anything, the city staff are here for you, if they have, they mention about our city. And then on the walk, is that rain or shine?
Rain or shine.
And the burritos are going to be on the top of the hill?
No, they'll be at the, at the bottom.
Oh, okay, because I want to make sure.
On the way back down.
So you don't have to hide. I just want to make sure it was rain or shine, so people still know they come up there.
They'll take a shot if they'll buy a burrito.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, that, I'm looking forward to the hike, and I thought the burritos would be on top, but I guess I'll have to go up and come back down. All right, thank you. All right. We have no closed session. And I will say, thank you to my colleagues for your lively discussion earlier. I know we could get sidetracked into the merits or the, or the ill effects of redevelopment agency. I know that there are some healthy differences in perspectives, so I'm going to leave that to all of you to repair to another location to have those discussions. But thank you for staying on point tonight.
I think it's a sidetrack, so I'll continue discussing it.
Tonight, it would have been a sidetrack.
For you, not for me.
All right.
So you...
All right, well, thank you anyway, Mayor Brotem.
Just side over the meeting.
We're going to adjourn to the next regular city council meeting to be held on Tuesday, March 13, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. Agenda item requests must be submitted in writing to the city clerk's office no later than 14 calendar days preceding this meeting. We are adjourned.
Part of my deliberative process.